I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome to the January 28th Rochester Common Council meeting. Everyone have a chance to look over the previous month's meetings and minutes? And what works in minutes?
Yes.
Someone want to make a motion to approve those minutes?
Make a motion.
I'll second.
Amy moved, approved, seconded, all in favor say aye. Couple communications to make.
Yeah, I just handed them out to everybody, that's the annual nepotism, saying that you're not related to anybody that you're working with or is working under you, and conflict of interest in case one of your businesses is doing business with the city.
So you're going to make a motion? She gets it before you leave. Andy, do you have something, would you mind just sharing something?
Sure. The council last year passed a resolution regarding public comment at meetings. For general public comment, we're gonna have time on the agenda. And when you speak, except when you're speaking to a council member or an office holder, or when presenting information on the agenda, please limit your discussion to the time reserved for general public. During the general public comment, each speaker will have three minutes to speak on a topic. You begin by stating your first and last name, and I'd ask that you stand when you speak as well. During that general comment time, you're to address your comments to the council or other office holders. You can comment on any topic relevant to city business, but comments are not to be obscene, defamatory, or threatening. You may ask questions, but any time spent answering those questions will be considered time yielded from your three minutes. When we have a public hearing, the same rules will apply, but the comments should be limited to the issue that the public comment is occurring for. I won't read those every month, but that hopefully get us started.
Yeah, we thought we'd start the new year just announcing that, reading that. There is another potential change. We haven't got the details worked out yet, but July 1st, we have to stream, live stream, which we do now, but on other meetings, we'll be live streaming every meeting, even this meeting, rather than sitting where you're sitting, we may have you come up to the podium so they can be picked up by the live stream. Depending on how we configure things, we'll start working those details out. So there'll be a few minor changes that we have to do in the middle of the year, but we haven't determined exactly what that's gonna look like, so we'll let you know. All meetings? All public meetings. So I mean, water board, park board, RDC, all those meetings will have to be streamed starting July 1st, isn't that right?
Yeah.
All right. I need a motion to open public hearing concerning ordinance 02-2025.
So move.
Seconded. Well, I'm seconded. If you've made a motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, great, I'll turn it over to you first, and I'll make a presentation.
Thank you. My name is Greg Majeski, I am with Keller Development. We have purchase agreement and will be developing property at 1329 College Avenue. It's a couple of lots, I believe four or five, they were originally platted with alleys in between some of them. They've never been improved, our surveyor confirmed there are no utilities, and the only bordering properties are properties that we will be using, so this doesn't concern any of the neighboring homes. And we're really just vacating them as a formality in order to ensure title across the whole site to be able to build the Hawkins homestead development here.
Good, so you're asking us to vacate that?
Yes, yes, sir. It's a valley, alleys inside the property, one runs perpendicular to college, east and west, about midway down the block, another one runs parallel with college, about halfway into the property. I apologize, I only brought the one visually.
I made this one for each of you, but that is, shows the one, it doesn't show the one right here with the maps I made each of you. So the one he brought shows both of them, they're just kinda stuck in the middle, not sure why it's even there that way.
Yeah, yeah, it's always been grass, right?
Yeah.
So... There were only ever, I think, one or two homes in that area anyway, and now that those are gone, it's really just, you know, one big grassy lot.
Right.
And I agree, and I'm normally not for vacating any alleys, I've been opposed to that for as long as I've been on the council, but in this case, I do see that that should be vacated, you can make the best use each property for which you're going to be doing here. I have some housing.
Yes.
Senior living award, a senior project.
We were awarded funding to build a 35-unit senior apartment complex.
I would make a motion to grant it.
We'll get there in a minute, we need to offer public, anybody here want to comment on this at all? Okay.
That co-supports it.
Thank you, Michael. So now we do a motion, now we do a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
I don't think we can vote the first time, we need to vote to approve closing.
Yeah, we did the first.
All in favor, so, all right, good. Now, let's go ahead, as we move down to new business, let's go ahead with that ordinance, it's got, let's second, let's do it first. So now if you want to make a motion to vacate that, go ahead.
I will make the motion to vacate that alleyway for better usage.
Ruth, come on for a second. Any more discussion, if not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Approve, five of...
Mr. Mayor, that's an ordinance you're passing?
Oh, we can read that.
Yeah, so you really need to do...
Gotcha.
Sorry about that.
You can read it all by title, if you have it.
We find it here, okay. Okay, all right. So...
Do you have that?
I don't...
Kate, you have that?
No.
You have that paper?
I do.
Okay.
It's 2025. Yeah, you've been doing the readings, though.
I would say, and I would say for tuning in title only for the first reading, please.
Well, we'll probably do all of it by title only because it's several pages.
That's okay with you, that would be wonderful.
Okay, so this is introduction to ordinance number 02-2025, and it is an ordinance vacating public alley, part of an east-west, north-south alley within the original and subsequent plats of the city of Rochester, Indiana, Rochester Township, Fulton County, Indiana. If there's no opposition or no objection, I will do a second reading by title only. The ordinance vacating public alley, part of an east-west, north-south alley within the original and subsequent plats of the city of Rochester, Indiana, Rochester Township, Fulton County, Indiana. There's no objection, I will read the third reading by title only. Ordinance vacating public alley, part of an east-west, north-south alley within the original and subsequent plats of the city of Rochester, Indiana, Rochester Township, Fulton County, Indiana, ordinance number 02-2025. Now we accept your motion to approve that, it was seconded by Amy. So now, are we good to go ahead and vote on that, Andy? Okay, all in favor, please raise your right hand. I think so. And then there is an ordinance in front of you, it's 01-2025. Although, I will best help people kind of explain this. What we found, we, with our sprinkling rates, they were established by water usage on November, December, January of each year, and those sprinkling rates went into effect in May, June, July, August, September, October, six months. Obviously, you know the state of our sewer department is in bad shape. Now this, what this does is, if you're sprinkling your yard with city water, sprinkler rates, that, no matter how much water you use in the middle of the summer, it goes back to usage in the winter, so that your sewer bill isn't higher than it should be. What we, but the people that really benefited the most from that were the people that go to Florida all winter and don't use any water. And so therefore, they're here getting a huge discount all summer, an unfair discount. So we just checked with other municipalities, found out that typically, there's a three-month period during the summer, June, July, August, where they offer sprinkling rates, and they also use, and some communities don't even have it. And then, many of them go down and just use January, the first month of the year to establish that. So, if you, if you look at the ordinance in front of you, it kind of shows the changes from what we had in the past. Andy, this is more, is this an ordinance or a resolution?
It's an ordinance, it's amendment to ordinance.
Yeah, it's actually an ordinance, because we're...
It says ordinance, but we've had the ordinance, we're just amending it, right?
Amending it, but that's...
Yeah, you amended ordinance by ordinance.
By another ordinance?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll get it one these days.
You're getting it.
So, Beth, do you have any better way of explaining it than I tried to?
No, not really, except that there is a caveat that new residential customers in their first year, and existing residential customers with consumption greater than zero as of January 1st will get the rate, so that can't, you know, new residents wouldn't have had any usage in that month, so they wouldn't have gotten it. So we're giving it to them the first year, and then after that, they'll go by the January usage.
The other thing too, is if you're filling a pool, and this has always been the case, you can call in, we can do a meter read, you fill your pool, we can come back and do a meter read, and that amount would not be applied to your sewer. Or if you do a lot of sprinkling and want to put in a sprinkler meter, we will supply the meter, you have to hire the plumber to come in and plum it in, we would inspect it before, we would okay it, and then you could have your own sprinkler meter, so that you're not, it's not on your sewer bill, if that makes sense? So there is options for those who really use a lot of water. So, okay. So, if you guys have read through this, I don't have to have a motion to start the reading of the ordinance, do I? Okay, so I'll read the ordinance by title only. An ordinance number 01-2025, an ordinance modifying the discount for seasonal utility use. There's no objection, I'll read the, do the second reading by title only. It's an ordinance number 01-2025, an ordinance modifying the discount for seasonal utility use. Then if there's no objection, I'll read it by title only for the third reading. Ordinance number 01-2025, an ordinance modifying the discount for seasonal utility use. Does anyone want to make a motion to approve that? Brian Goodson motion, Amy seconded, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Pass six oh. Okay.
There's a error in the agenda, I apologize, it's the doors and ordinance, I didn't catch the previous removal word resolution from prior agenda.
Okay, so the plan tonight was to go ahead and do the third reading and vote on this. Mark is very ill, so he couldn't make it. It's my opinion that, as we've been through these public hearings and lengthy discussion for months, I would really like, personally, I would like to have a full house to vote on this. I guess it's up to the council to make that decision, not me, but my opinion is, we should have, I know Ruth can't vote, she won't be voting because she has a business, but, so my, that's my opinion.
And Mark did actually, he called me earlier, and he did say he would prefer to be here if at all possible, but that he had had a procedure, unfortunately, he could not make it, because he thought he would feel well enough to be here, but he is not, and so he had said that he would prefer to be here related to the subject matter, so that was what I had shared with Trent.
Is this a table?
Table? Do we need to make a motion to table it?
I think you should.
Okay, I'll make a motion, and we can look for next one. Is there a second?
Second.
Brian, this one, you're seconded, all in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, so we'll put that on February agenda.
But thank you to all of you who came here, I apologize, but Mark really wants to make sure he's here to...
All right, any, let's see, any other old business that I'm not seeing or doing? Guess we're ready for the department reports. Chief Shot?
Good evening. We've got a lot of information in front of you, I'm not going to go through all of it, feel free to go through it if you have questions. When you're out of here, give me a call, I'll try to answer whatever I can, but you've got the monthly stats for December, there are 18 accidents, 55 warnings. Yeah, something's not right. Forty-one offenses. Twenty-three case reports, 434 calls for service. And you've got the annual totals, the next page of the crimes people were lodged for just in December. After that, you've got the annual totals and how they compare to previous years. I will say, I don't believe these numbers are 100% accurate, just based on the fact that we were utilizing coding and spillman for quite a while, and then switched, so I don't think they're accurate. Just for example, in the last four months of the year, my records show that we didn't arrest anybody on a warrant, on a warrant only, when every other month prior we have, so I don't think they're accurate, they're as close as I can get. After that, you have all the crimes that people were lodged for, and the totals for 2024, and how that compares to 2023. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer it. If you look at something and see something that doesn't look right, give me a call, I'll try to answer it or talk to you about it. Other than that, we are accepting applications, I got notified that we've got one officer that's looking at retiring, either in March or June, not quite sure yet, still have some details to work out with retirement fund, things like that, but he did notify me that he's gonna be retiring this year, so we're accepting apps to get ahead of the process, hopefully, and we'll see where that goes. And that's really all I have, unless you guys have any questions.
Is everything going well with the transition of everything to the annual one office?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I put her over there.
Andy, that is?
I put her over there.
Chief, the voice?
I've got one more. I've got more.
Chief, the voice?
Yes, sir.
We finished the year with 767 runs, I think that's about 15 more than last year. Thirty-five in the last month were medical, six structure fires, two equipment, two vehicle fires, three alarms, six accidents, two gas leaks, four CO checks, one burning complaint, three field fires, one rescue, and four service, public assistance calls. Equipment, we got all the new boots in, everybody has their new boots and they're in service now, the gloves are all in, I believe, we're still waiting on the hose. Training, we did some SEBA training in the basement, shift training has been ice rescue the first half of the month, and thermal engineering cameras been the last half. We have three volunteers who finished up their DRS classes, so they'll be able to start making runs next month, I just sent their paperwork to the state yesterday. Two of them finished up their Fire 2 certs, and one went to ice rescue training in Culver. The upstairs offices have been added, the framing's done, the electric's roughed, and the drywall is on the outside. We finished the year with, and these are voted on, our firefighter of the year this year was Michael Hicks, EMT of the year was Jamie Gagden. And we have one door we're waiting on parts for, overhead door, and the signs have been ordered and will be installed as soon as weather breaks. We've signed it in the...
Anybody else represented in the Forest Department here, so, Mike, what you want to do then, enlighten us?
Starting tomorrow, at the redevelopment commission meeting, we're going to be meeting with Club 720, which is the group that did our housing study, Profeco, and now they've changed their name, they're working into, working with the city for the new housing project. They'll be working on the MOU tomorrow, and get as far as they can to get those things taken care of. I spent the day comfortable because I'm writing six grants at the same time on various projects, whatnot, public safety issues, some water issues that I'm forwarding to city water people to look at. We are also going to be meeting tomorrow with representative of the hotel company that's interested in coming in. We have a site, I'll say possibly located at this point in time, we just have to finalize it, there's some other issues that we need to deal with. And I'll stop at that point with, I'll end with something that has been on burning up my emails all morning long. Early this morning, the Trump administration put a hiatus on all the grants, and we now have some clarification of what those grants are, being stopped, but nothing that provides direct benefits to individuals is going to be paused, and nothing that impacts cities or our regional funds, the BISCO program, the USDA money, things like that, is going to be impacted. So that's been a big issue for us all morning long, it's just things like, I'll read the list real quick, because it's very, very small. Let me get to it. Protecting people, American people against invasion, reevaluating U.S. foreign aid, international environment agreements, working with American energy, see what kind of grants go there, ending DEI programs, enforcing the Hyde Amendment, and defending women from gender ideology. So it's the bigger things, not the smaller things that my regional group has been in a tizzy with all day long, so, and I hope that none of that was defamatory or threatening, so that's the end of that.
Federal judge temporarily blocked that plan. A judge has temporarily blocked that plan, so it's gonna play out on the courts for a while.
The whole thing? Or it sounded, what?
Yeah, it looks like to me.
I was wondering...
I mean, it's gonna close down, I think it closes down, he still has to go with his stop new grants and expired grants.
But current funding is fine, correct?
Until report decides otherwise.
And they say individuals, but does it, if an individual owns 100% of the LLC?
I'm going to assume no, Bob, the, what they've got here is, the clause does not apply across the board, it is expressly limited to programs, projects, and activities implicated by the president's executive orders, which I just read those details. He's going after DEI, the Green New Deal, and funding non-governmental organizations undermining the national interest. And that's all we have at the moment. As things develop and we get more mail tomorrow, I'll send it out to everybody for you, just to keep you in the loop, but right now, it looks like anything that we're working with isn't going to be involved with.
All right.
I know, I know, I cycled that, but we have registered until...
Yeah, I talked earlier, did you have anything to say?
If you want to report, I can give it, if not, okay. We had our first board meeting of the year. Today, we welcomed three new board members, we are, it's grant season, like, especially with Indiana, Art Commission for us and the theater. I think we're working on three for that, I shared an Oakra grant with Trent this afternoon for the whole area, and then we were really happy to have a conference call, it's a long, long game, but with a part of the Lilly process, it could take forever, and we know that, but we were very happy to be at the table with them. We had the theater and RDP together, so that was nice. We've got a lot, there's a whole bunch of Main Street conferences in northern Indiana this year, so we're really, that's cool, Warsaw, Plymouth, Monticello, like kind of in our neighborhood, and very relatable to what we're doing here. We're bringing Art Committee together to help, we've got a strong new board member for that, to help me, so it, there's a lot of good coming right now, so, all good news. A quick thing on the theater, we actually surpassed 1,000 guests for January. The restaurants have been real happy with it, like, we had, we kind of put our foot on the gas pedal for what else you have to do in the winter, and it's kind of paid off, so we're pretty tickled. So, good news, start the year off.
Mike, I didn't mean to overlook you, did you have anything you wanted to share?
Absolutely not. She can hear for both of us, Mike.
Absolutely not. Anytime you do, you're more than welcome.
Do you want me to share my report now?
Yeah.
Okay. Animal shelter vet today, we have next month, will the new director will be here? There is a new director, she's very talented, lots of energy, I appreciate her, Janet has moved into the fundraising role because she wants to spend more time with her kids, so she is still there, but she has decreased her time, and this young lady said today, I did part of it on the call and part of it in person, she is tracking the animals as we have requested from the various locations, so we will know which animals are coming to the facilities from the different localities, as was requested by Trent, as well as looking at putting together the cost per animal to take care of, so that is something she's been tasked with and very happy to do. I appreciated her and thought that she's gonna have a bright future, so she'll be here in February to introduce herself. Area plan, not the plan for area plan, but we had a rediscussion of solar ordinance, so there were a couple things that the commissioners had felt were not representative of what they wanted, so we had a lengthy conversation yesterday, and may or may not have come up with a solution to that, it depends upon what they decide, so, in essence, the ordinance may come back before the city council at some point with different language related to some setbacks in other pieces, just to ensure that everyone feels like they're on the same page.
All right, solid waste.
Well, I unlit my paperwork, sorry, but, but, every, every time, the solid waste is pretty well, makes the same amount of money each month, they're very consistent, and last month, they, they voted all their members in, which are the same people as they was last year, so, that's it.
Those are really exciting meetings, aren't they?
Yes, they are, some of them last five minutes. Five, one lasted five. Five minutes.
You got one here, that's 20, 20 minutes to get there.
Oh, wow, no, it's really interesting, though, because they do, they, between what the landfill pays and what they get for selling everything that everybody gives to them, it's pretty much very steady, very steady year round.
I guess I have something to add to that.
Yeah.
We do have a leachate agreement?
Oh, come on.
It's not tremendous. It's not tremendously lucrative, but it's, it's a profitable number. But the big caveat here was we wanted, we wanted a controlled product, not some random number that we were constantly having to adjust our treatment to and our cost to. So Marcus and I, I think Gary Hartwig, we've all involved in this to some degree. But we came up to, with a three-tiered system. One is a, and they have the means up there to treat. If they bring us treated material, we're basically just running through. Then that's a certain number, which I think is three and a half cents. But if it goes up to a higher tier, a higher concentrate, then it jumps up to eight cents. And if it gets above that, you know, it's subject to shut off, and they know that. We had to shut them off in April. It really upset them. But it upset me for them to expect otherwise when they brought a lot of volume to us of high-level concentrate that filled up our storage tank. We couldn't do anything with it.
So you get to decide that for the, I mean, as far as you're, you're running the, they're running the test out here. Marcus is running the test to make that determination.
Yeah, he'll be testing that all the time and knowing if we get out of whack, then they understand it. So we have a good relationship right with them now, I think. They've been very pleased. But I, you know, I made it clear, I said, "We're going to make money off of you. We're not going to work together." But I said, "That's just fair." I mean, we want you to be happy. We want to be happy. So we got that worked out. The other thing that was, I think, was a big deal is we were paying $200 a ton to public services for sludge removal, which was about 500 tons a year, which was $100,000 for them to bring a container, we filled it up, they kept it up and dumped it in a hole up there. Well, this stuff has value, nutrient value. I'm, I live, I farm right around the corner from Merrill Brothers BioSolids. And we contacted Ryan Zach with them, had him look at all our numbers. This was about two, two or three-month deal. And it all fit what they could land apply for farming. I am not one of those farmers, just so there's no conflict of interest. But they do have, they have part of their farmland themselves down there, and they have participating farmers, which I am not one of them. But they will haul it down to Coquemboule and land apply it for use for growing crops.
At their cost?
Well, no, but it's forty percent. We're going to save sixty grand. Forty grand, $40,000, we can have the same 500 ton move to Coquemboule and land apply it for a good purpose.
Very good.
So that's all benefit of our wastewater plant. So those are two.
How are they getting the loads to us? Is that trucked in?
They'll be bringing trucks. We're actually, I think we're going to either stockpile it or they're going to put a dumpster in and they'll pick up the dumpster or else we'll load it, they'll payload it. It's a, it's a, I don't want to say it's a dry material, but it's a manageable wet material. So, but I don't like just dumping it in a hole. It's not serving any purpose and now, and it's highly concentrated, obviously. So this is a good way of using it at a much cheaper cost for us, so. So those are two, two big things for the Forests.
Good job.
Park Board?
They met January eighth, and I was not able to attend.
Oh, that's right.
And I haven't seen any minutes, so I don't.
Yeah, what we talking about? We have John Burnett. John Burnett was a newcomer. I'll tell you a quick story on him. I'll say it again tomorrow at my State of the City address. But John came to one of our meetings earlier this, I think it was late spring or something, and he just showed up. I didn't know who he was. Introduced myself to him and thought he was somebody trying to sell something. And he said, "No," he said, "I'm just a citizen. I got small kids." He said, "I take my kids out of town to parks because the parks here aren't very good." And he said, "But I'm not one to sit back and complain. I want to help." I thought, "John, you're my new best friend." So, but anyway, he became, was part of the steering committee. And Alex Berlin did not want to serve me longer, so his term was up. He stepped down. And they, they agreed John should be the guy. So he's outside on the park board. So go ahead. You were here.
Yeah, I was going to say, they talked to a member about the park plan that they are still working on. They think that they're meeting today. Is that what you said?
I was wrong. It's next month.
Okay. I didn't think yesterday, but, yeah, so they, I had told Kim, I mean, this is something, have some questions related to that. So the park plan is still working on, trying to figure out. There was some change of staff, I believe, in the company or something happened, and so they've been delayed on doing that. That was one of the biggest conversations.
And a pool renovation.
Yeah, and a pool renovation.
That, as you uncover, tear up concrete, uncover more problems you don't totally expect. So that's going to be a little more costly to the park department to get it up. We, I think, last time they were still on a timeline to try and be open by Memorial Day, unless that changes. But right now, things are progressing on that, so.
And Ally was here too, remember, that young lady about grants?
Oh, yeah, yeah. We had a representative from.
HWC.
HWC, talking about grant possibilities for the parks.
Could they elect officers?
Yes.
Yeah, and Kim Lanis is president. And who's secretary? John.
John.
All right, Water?
Yeah, we've got, had a Water Board meeting, that's for sure. We have a new member. Mark Smiley is a new board member. Cassie Smith is the president. Rachel Stevenson is the secretary and Marcus is board member. Exciting things that went on at the meeting. Really, the most exciting part is, when I get to it here from my notes, is that Derek let the board know that after the meeting that Clerk Treasurer discussed the status of the water office, and Derek would now be in charge of the water office and staff. It's just a change around to just kind of take a load off of, off of people. And he's, he's very apt to do it, so he's going to be in charge of the Water Board Office and the girls in there. He's going to be sitting in there, but he'll be running around doing his job as always. Derek does a great job for us. Office hours are now changed. This will be probably very important to people that, they've been changed. And the, the windows will be open from 7:45 a.m. till 3:30 p.m. These are allowed to give the staff time to get things started in the morning and then to put things away in the evening. So it's going to hopefully cut down on some overtime and get the girls so they can get in there and do their job and then, and go home in a decent hour. Derek presented the board with the new pay scale and new longevity package that was created by the mayor and the clerk treasurer and the department heads. This is to get all the departments on the same page going forward. And Cassie made a motion to approve the new pay scale and new longevity package effective January 1, 2025. That really is about everything. It was running well. The office is going well. They haven't had any problems. No freezing pipes that have caused major, major problems. There have been a few at some homes, but not like we've had a few years ago out here on Old Thirty-One. And yes, the, the home inspections for the lead pipe is going to be stopped until May 5th due to the weather and because so many being canceled, rescheduled because so many of our people that are in that area are in Florida and gone for the winter. Everything else is going well, and that'll be about it unless you've got some questions for something.
Brian, you did, we combined. We, we had a sidewalk committee that we formed, and we combined that with a tree board now. So now, starting on the combined board, so to speak, is Jim Mulligan, Eric Binninger, Phil Klein, Phil Thompson, and Anna Rowe. And that gives us our board. We felt like those two areas needed to work together.
Sure.
And we had a trouble, obviously, you know, trying to fill that tree board position. What is the, do you know the dates?
February the, the first February, or first Tuesday of the month.
It is?
I believe so. Okay, look real quick.
I forget what we said.
I have them all in here. It is February 4th.
At five o'clock?
Five o'clock.
Okay, I don't, my sheet got cut off. I don't think we missed anybody, though. Anybody?
Related to the numbers of domestic violence I saw in the report, we are continuing our partnership with Beeman Home. I have flyers here for everybody in the community as well. If you want one, the Beeman Home through Fulton County Hope is coming twice a month. It's not a lot right now, but trying to provide in-house services for individuals who find themselves in a domestic violence situation. So this is the updated calendar of dates, so we can get a copy for you guys back there as well. I'll have extra, but I think I already gave that to you at the council meeting. But for those out there, for anybody who finds themselves in that situation, Beeman Home staff are at Recovery Cafe twice in January, twice in February, and twice in March. And can provide outpatient services as well as help anybody who finds themselves in a emergency situation placement in Warsaw at the moment. And the other thing that we're working on, thanks to Trent, is, and this is the January version of it, but we have a homeless warming center. Fulton County Hope and the county are working with the local churches to provide an emergency warming center temporary for those that need it. So January, it was at Church of the Heartland. It is there until the end of the month. Then we are finalizing details, Lord willing, to move it to our next church, which I'm waiting to say who it is, but we have all the details and the date to move, so I'm pretty sure. But it is every day. Intake starts at 6:00 p.m. Individuals come. The only thing that cannot be currently accommodated related to the warming center is unfortunately sex offenders, mainly because of the fact that the facility is co-ed. So they are in the same room, and so that would be something that is not allowable at the moment. So thanks to literally everybody who has made this possible. We have such great support. And ton of volunteers, ton of food, ton of everything. Lebon Hospital provided linen. So this is a true community project and hope to continue to help folks as we find out who they are and then help them to get the resources they need, so.
All right. Anything else? Andy, you got it?
I read the instructions for general public comment. You should have it before we go.
I'm sorry, what?
You need to ask if anyone has public comment, because we haven't had the general public comment.
The public wants the general comment. I have, I have a question. Can we have a election of officers?
Oh, we did not.
Oh, we did not do that.
They were supposed to do that January, on the.
Yeah, I think that's January 1.
That's the first. It goes every year.
I have to.
It goes every year.
That is a good point.
I would nominate Brian Goodman for the president of the council again for next year.
Second. Okay, we moved to second. All in favor, say. Read your, read your.
All in favor?
I'm holding my stand.
Everything's standing.
That's the only, only position we have on this council, and it's just the president. There's no other.
I, I don't recall you've ever elected a vice president. The council could. I don't think you did.
And then the other thing is that everyone would stay with their same boards and their.
We talked about that. That way we'd be prepared for the meetings early in the month.
Good.
Okay, thank you. So we should be good on that, so. All right, anybody have anything else to share? If you guys can, you know, we'll talk to you guys if you get a few minutes or something. Obviously, you came hoping to get an answer. But obviously, we feel like linked time this has happened and, you know, we, we need, I think we need complete representation across the community for this vote. And that's why I'd like for everybody to be here for that. I guess that's basically all I was going to tell you, is the reason behind that. So I know you're probably a little bit disappointed you had to come out and not get, to hear what the answer was going to be on this.
But we saw, we saw all their beautiful faces.
Yeah, I'm glad you attended.
At least it wasn't until it got cold.
All right, well, if there's nothing else, do you?
Negative effects waiting another month? Or what do you guys?
It's so cold. I don't think.
Doesn't really matter.
I mean, we still have to send off whatever we, if we determine to pass.
Right. It won't happen right away. It'll still have to go to the state.
It's still timeline-wise, it should, if it passes here, it should still happen before.
St. Patrick's Day, St. Patrick's Day might be missed, but.
That probably won't happen next week.
I mean, yeah, it depends.
We'll see how this goes. Okay, all right, well, if you need a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Brian and Amy, all in favor, say aye. Or raise your hand. I don't care.
Please sign the minutes of last meeting.
Oh, you have them.
A few witnesses are here.
You got the minutes somewhere?
Uh, the minutes should be on that.
Should be. I don't know. I got a copy. I guess, now I've got two witnesses here.